I'd like to call the meeting to order. Could we please stand for a pledge to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This is the organization meeting for the Bayonne Board of Education for 2019. Each of you is a trustee. We have no officers as yet and will not have any until the required election for which will enable us to be legally organized. This is also a regular meeting. There will be some resolutions to depose of after the election of officers. I will act as presiding officer pro term until a president has been duly elected. For the record, this is a public organization meeting of the Bayonne Board of Education. It is 7:39 PM, the third day of January 2019. We're convening in the Anna J. Herbert Meeting Room. The presiding officer at the present time is Dr. Gary Maida, acting president of the Bayonne Board of Education. Those in attendance include Dr. Michael A. Wonko, superintendent of schools, Mr. Kenneth Kopaz, assistant superintendent for personnel, Dr. Gary Maida, board secretary, Mr. Thomas Figueroa Jr., acting school business administrator, Dr. Dennis Degnan, assistant superintendent for curriculum and instruction, and Mr. Mitchell Pescual, Esquire, our board counsel. The meeting is open to the public. I will take a roll call. Trustee Alonzo.
Present.
Trustee Broderick.
Present.
Trustee Casillas.
Present.
Trustee Cruden.
Present.
Trustee Finnerty.
Present.
Trustee Munoz.
Here.
Trustee Bellato.
Here.
Trustee Wilbeck.
Here.
For the record, adequate written advance notice of at least 48 hours giving the time, date, and location of the meeting with the agenda was provided as follows. Notice was prominently posted in City Hall at 630 Avenue C on the bulletin board reserved for such announcements of the Board of Education. Board secretary sent such notice to the Jersey Journal. Notice was filed with the municipal clerk of the city of Bayonne, Mr. Robert F. Sloan, and also our posting was on our BBOED website. Okay. So our first order of business is our board member vacancy. At this time, I will open it up to the trustees. Is there a selection for a candidate?
I'd like to nominate someone. I just want to say a few words first.
Go ahead.
I need to say a few words to explain to people why I'm of Bayonne, why I'm making this nomination. All of us up here supported a candidate in this election, some of us privately, others very publicly. As you know, I supported a ticket. I supported a ticket of friends who, like me, had a vision of making Bayonne schools better. We have known each other since high school, and during the campaign, we strengthened our friendship, knocking on doors in the heat and the cold and the rain, crazy. One of them, I'm happy to say, was elected to the board, Trustee Casillas, and thank you, Bayonne, for voting her in. Another candidate came up a few votes short, but he put his resume in for consideration for the one-year term vacancy. And although we would love to see him up here, working with us, Trustee Casillas reminded me that we were elected to this office and that we fought hard to get a mayor that would make this an elected board. We must, and she told me, Maria, we must do what's right. So with the heaviest of hearts, I look at my friend and I apologize to him, my dear friend, but I must respect the democratic process. No one has been sworn in to this vacancy. If this vacancy would have been on November 10, we would have had a clear winner. I respect the democratic process. We must respect and listen to the voices of our Bayonne residents, who gave this person 1,850 votes for one-year term, placing him second. I pray that my fellow trustees also do the right thing and listen to our Bayonne residents and respect their votes, their voice, that they fought for this elected board. I nominate Hector Gonzalez for this one-year term, which he came in second place for behind Michael Mulcahy. Thank you.
Is there a second?
I will.
Okay. I'd like to back up one second before we take a vote on that. We do have some cards from members of the audience that would like to make comments, but just to let the public know, the board member vacancy, the candidates were Mary Jane Desmond, Jan Patrick Egan, Hector Gonzalez Jr., Melissa Godsky Rodriguez, Charles Ryan, Leo Smith, Richard Treons, Charmin Montgomery, and John Milan Sebeck. At this time, and remember, you have three minutes. I'll ask Mr. David Solari, 16 Colonial Drive.
Where are you at the mall? Thank you.
You're good? Okay. Aya Lamrosi?
Yes.
I'm sorry, 27 Pointview Terrace.
Yeah, but I'm here as a reporter, not a resident, just wanted to clarify.
Just up to the microphone, please.
My question is, so my understanding, and please, if my facts are not correct, please correct me, my understanding is that two other people applied for this position, including Leo Smith and Jan Patrick, and they both achieved a little bit over 10% of the votes, yet two other people that became finalists only had 4.5%, and the other had 4% of the votes. So I am wondering, what does the final selection say about the voters and how they voted versus what actually ended up happening within the committee?
That's a rhetorical question.
If my question wasn't clear, I can clarify.
Maria Bellato answered it.
What's that?
Trustee Bellato answered it. I mean, why?
Yeah.
Can I say something? Can I say something? This is for the one-year, this was for the one-year term. All the names that you gave are all for the three-year term.
Right. So, but the other people still did achieve more votes.
Right, but it's different terms. That was a three-year term.
They applied to the position, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so why is it, why does the term?
I think the rationale here, ma'am, is that this Michael Mulcahy resigning is for the one-year term.
Right.
All right? And that's what we're deciding here, a one-year term, not a three-year term.
Okay.
I think that that's the rationale for the decision by Trustee Bellato.
Right, but three of, but three of the people who ran for the other terms did not make it, but they applied for that.
Thank you.
For that same position, unless I don't have that correct.
So the question's been answered.
I think it's been answered.
What's the answer?
The answer is they considered the individuals who ran for the one-year term. The answer is they considered the individuals that ran for the one-year term.
Okay, so all the people that were considered in the final round were the people who originally ran in November for that term, correct? For the one-year term? Am I getting that right or no?
That's why nominated.
They've asked, it's been answered already.
Okay, thanks.
Next up, Mr. Anthony D'Amico, 73 West Sixth Street.
I just said it, so you're fine. You can go right. My thing is, is that, yeah, the people obviously said what they said with their votes, but at the same time, now it's a different thing. It's not an election. So my thing is, as Board of Education, you guys should be looking for the most qualified person, not just for somebody who got votes, because we all know in this town, votes don't mean you're qualified. It means you're connected or friends. I'd rather the most qualified person actually be in there instead of a person who got votes. I ran, I got votes. It doesn't mean that I'm the most qualified person. So to me, relying just on votes when the election was done, okay, it happened. Now's your chance to get the most qualified person or the candidate that committed a run. I'd rather see that than bringing up the city and mayor and friends and this and that. I'd rather see the most qualified person be up for a vote instead of just going based on votes, friendships, and City Hall connections.
Thank you, gentlemen. Last card for board vacancy, Carol Smeltzer, Esquire.
Good evening. I thank you for your nomination. My name is Carol Smeltzer, and I am an attorney with the New Jersey Principals and Supervisors Association.
Ms. Smeltzer, should I just get a little bit of my...
Of course. The New Jersey Principals and Supervisors Association represents members of the Bayonne Public Schools Administrators Association with regard to their employment in the district. Yesterday, we submitted a letter to the school board secretary to share with you regarding our concerns over the potential selection of former board trustee Charles Ryan to serve the one-year term of Michael Mulcahy. We hope that you have reviewed that letter and considered the concerns that we raised. Additionally, although not referenced in our letter, it is our view that the conduct of former trustee Ryan while serving on the board likely violated the Code of Ethics for school board members. In that regard, New Jersey Statute 18A:12-24.1D requires board members to carry out their responsibility not to administer the schools, but to see that they are well-run. New Jersey Statute 18A:12-24.1J requires board members to refer all complaints to the chief administrative officer and act on the complaints at public meetings only after failure of an administrative solution. Former trustee Ryan did not comply with these provisions of the Code of Ethics and should not be given another opportunity to violate the School Ethics Act. Most recently, at the board's open workshop meeting on November 28, 2018, Mr. Ryan chose to publicly berate Mr. Tim Craig, Director of Fine and Performing Arts and Business Education, and one of his non-tenured staff members over the discontinuation of the indoor percussion program for the school year. Lastly, and speaking to your point, it bears noting that when the public recently voted in the school board election, they did not vote to keep former trustee Ryan on the board. In fact, former trustee Ryan was among the lowest vote-getters in this election. For these reasons, we are respectfully requesting that the board fill the current vacancy with a member of the community who is ready, willing, and able to fill this important role in a professional and responsible manner. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a selection. We have a selection of Hector Gonzalez Jr. as a candidate to fill the vacant seat on the Bayonne Board of Education. It was a motion by trustee Maria Bellato, and it was seconded by Jody Casillas. So on that motion and that second, trustee Alonzo, yes or no or abstain? Trustee Broderick?
No.
Trustee Casillas?
Yes.
Trustee Cruden?
No.
Trustee Finnerty?
No.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Bellato?
Yes.
And trustee Wilbeck?
No.
Okay. No quorum there. I will open it up again to selection of candidate to fill the vacant seat.
I nominate Mr. Broderick.
No, no. No, no.
I'll make the nomination. I nominate Charles Ryan.
I'll second that.
Well, let's see. We have Mr. Charles Ryan, and it was moved by trustee Alonzo, seconded by trustee Finnerty. So I'll take a roll call vote on the selection of Charles Ryan as a candidate to fill the vacant seat on the Bayonne Board of Election. Motion by trustee Alonzo, seconded by trustee Finnerty. Trustee Alonzo?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
I can make a little statement. The, you're right, there was many, many, many good candidates. A lot of people would be deserving to be up here as a trustee. But I did personally was, I was kind of hoping at one point that it wouldn't be taken out of our hands, but that wasn't the case. So I was actually the person that had to put the committee together. So once I did that, I thought I put the affairs committee, I could put together that I did, and I said that whenever that committee comes up, it would be the person that I would vote for, and I'm just following those guidelines, and I swiped, oh, yes.
Trustee Casillas?
No.
Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty?
Yes, may I please, please say something? With regard to this, I, like Mr. Broderick, gave this a great deal of thought, and I did say to my fellow trustees before we came out here, three years ago when I sat in that room, I had no idea what I was going to face. And let me tell you something, my whole perspective about being a trustee has changed. It is a tremendous responsibility. It requires a great deal of work, a great deal of emotion, a lot goes into this, a lot of reading, a lot of time, a lot of effort. And I think about what this current board is going to face in the next four to five months. We need someone who has experience, and yes, we have some very, very, very good candidates who have very, very good intentions, and I'm sure they will make great candidates in future. But right now, we need someone who has the experience to deal with the enormity of the decisions that we have to make in the next four or five months. And you have to work with Mr. Ryan for three years. I think he brings that experience that this board needs right now. So yes, for Charles Ryan.
Trustee Munoz?
So let me say that, you know, the whole idea of experience has come up several times in this, in this selection process. And although I do agree with trustee Finnerty that experience is important, that was also the same type of thinking that kept us with an appointed board for years. The whole idea, I'm going to appoint this person because they're experienced and I support them, but let us not forget, we are an elected board right now. If you're talking about experience, there are plenty of qualified applicants here. Charmin Montgomery, Mary Jane Desmond, Melissa Godsky Rodriguez, Jan Egan, who served on several boards. But if we're talking about a truly elected board, which we are, you know, it's all of a sudden, we look at something as, they don't have experience is a bad thing. Let me remind this board that five of us sat up here three years ago, and none of us knew what we were doing. We were five neophytes, as everyone likes to use that word now. All of a sudden, it's a vocabulary word of the week, okay? We were five people that had no idea, but you know what? We had grit, determination, and we had heart, and it got us through. We went through some rocky times, but we respected the will of the people and the voters of Bayonne, and that is why I am voting no to Charles Ryan, because he did not come in first place, or I should say, second place, or the next runner-up in the one-year term. Thank you.
I respect that we fought hard to get a elected board, and I could have, I could have nominated easily my friend, but I listened to the voices of the people of Bayonne. They gave us a second place for one year, and that is why I must vote no for Charles Ryan.
Trustee Wilbeck?
Absolutely and definitely yes.
Okay, so there's a selection of Charles Ryan as a candidate to fill the vacant seat on the Bayonne Board of Education. That's five affirmative votes, which is a majority of the quorum. Mr. Ryan is here, I believe. If he comes up front, I will swear him in.
I, Charles Ryan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Charles Ryan.
I, Charles Ryan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications.
That I possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by law for the office of a member of the Board of Ed.
Prescribed by law for the office of a member of the Board of Ed.
And that I am not disqualified.
And that I am not disqualified.
As a voter.
As a voter.
Pursuant to RS 19.
Pursuant to RS 19.
4.1.
4.1.
Nor disqualified.
Nor disqualified.
Due to conviction of a crime.
Due to conviction of a crime.
Or an offense.
Or an offense.
Listed in NJ.
Listed in NJ.
18A.
18A.
12-1.
12-1.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform all the duties.
And just perform all the duties.
Of that office.
Of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Yeah, I'm not like you, was short as a tacky boxer.
I'm looking at you.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking.
So I would, I nominate.
I'm aware.
No, I'm next to you.
Okay. Our next order of business is acceptance of communications, and you'll see a list of communications. There is an addition, John R. O'Donnell, and there's a resignation letter. All our correspondence is up on the bulletin board. Do I have a motion to accept communications?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
So on that motion and a second to accept communications, trustee Alonzo?
Aye.
Trustee Broderick?
Aye.
Trustee Casillas?
Aye.
Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Bellato?
Yes.
Trustee Wilbeck?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Our next order of business is election of the Board of Education president. At this time, I'll move to open nominations for the position of president of the Bayonne Board of Ed.
I nominate Mr. Joseph Broderick.
I'll second.
So there is a motion, first, to open the nominations for president, not a candidate yet, just to open nominations. So I have a motion by trustee Wilbeck, and I have a second by trustee Cruden to open up nominations for president of the Bayonne Board of Ed. Trustee Alonzo?
Wait. I thought you didn't need a second.
They're opening it up. Opened it. Now you have to put the name, right?
Folks, just follow what I'm doing. It's on your agenda. Trustee Alonzo?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Casillas?
No.
No, yes.
It's the open nomination.
Sorry, sorry.
That's it. Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Bellato?
Yes.
Trustee Wilbeck?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Folks, don't be mad at me. It's Robert's rules. Arm along on your agenda. Now I'd like to make a motion. Is there a motion to place into nomination for the position of president of the Bayonne Board of Ed?
I nominate Mr. Joseph Broderick.
There we go. Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
So there's a motion and a second to put into nomination for the position of president of the Bayonne Board of Ed, Mr. Joseph Broderick. Trustee Alonzo?
Aye.
Wasn't there another?
Trustee Broderick?
Don't we ask if there's another?
As our legal attorney told us inside, we're following the same format that we followed in the last previous few years. Just follow along our agenda. So back again, I have a motion and a second to place into nomination for president, Mr. Joseph Broderick. I have a yes by trustee Alonzo. Trustee Broderick?
Frank, I'm getting nominated a lot, yes.
Trustee Casillas?
No.
Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
No.
Trustee Bellato?
No.
Trustee Wilbeck?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Okay, so I have a quorum on that vote, so it's passed to move along. So there's a motion now to close the nominations for position of president of the Bayonne Board of Ed, with Mr. Joseph Broderick being moved and seconded. So this is a motion to close nominations.
Close to close.
Motion by trustee Cruden. Is there a second?
I second.
You didn't take nominations for the other, you were supposed to act.
Folks.
Whatever.
Do you want our attorneys to explain it out here right before we left the room, what we decided to do? Okay? All right. Do I have a second? Trustee Cruden moved.
I second.
So I have a motion and a second to close nominations for position of president of the Bayonne Board of Ed. On that move and second, trustee Alonzo?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Casillas?
Yes.
Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
No.
Trustee Bellato?
No.
Trustee Wilbeck?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan? So we have a motion to elect Joseph Broderick, president of the Bayonne Board of Education. Do I have a motion?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
I second.
So I have a motion by trustee Cruden, I have a second by trustee Finnerty, on a motion to elect Joseph Broderick, president of the Bayonne Board of Education. Now we didn't, believe me, it's Robert's rules.
Well, Robert's huge.
Well, join the club. Join the club. Trustee Alonzo?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
That's because Roberts isn't here to vote tonight, I guess. Uh, yes.
Trustee Casillas?
What am I voting on?
You're voting on Joseph Broderick to be elected president of the Bayonne Board of Education.
No.
Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
No.
Trustee Bellato?
No.
Trustee Wilbeck?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Congratulations, Mr. Broderick. Please take over.
I missed it. Didn't know, I don't know where it happened. Don't know.
I promise to do it back inside. I don't think I misunderstood what was said in closed session to do after.
We'll discuss.
All right. Give the big voice.
I wanted to.
You want, then you gotta take this one. You're gonna give me my lou.
Please look at me.
Joseph Broderick, do you have a few words you'd like to say before I get started?
Um, I'd just like to say that I think in the last year or two, we've done some pretty good things. I'm proud of the people I work here with. Uh, you know, that goes with the trustees, it goes with the central office, it goes with the entire school district. I think the changes we made, whether it be financially, educationally, have been outstanding so far. And I'm happy to be here for another year at least as this position because I think we have a few more big spots coming up. Fortunately, we have to refill the superintendent position, we need a business administrator. Uh, so there's some big decisions coming up and I'm happy to be here to help with this and thank you once again.
Okay, folks, I'll ask you to follow along on your agenda. I'm asking for a motion to open nominations for Vice President of the Bayonne Board of Education.
I'll motion to open the nomination for Vice President.
And is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
So there's a motion and a second to open nominations. Trustee Alonso.
Yes.
Trustee Broderick, I'm sorry, trustee Casillas.
Yes.
Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Velado.
Yes.
Trustee Willbeck.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes.
Next up, there's a motion to place into nomination for the position Vice President of the Bayonne Board of Ed. Is there a trustee that would like to make a suggestion?
I'll make a suggestion, please. I'd like to nominate Dennis Willbeck.
I'll second.
So there's a motion from trustee Finnerty, there's a second from trustee Cruden to place into nomination for position of Vice President, Mr. Dennis Willbeck. On that motion and second, trustee Alonso.
Yes.
Trustee Casillas.
No.
Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
No.
Trustee Velado.
No.
Trustee Willbeck.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
And President Broderick.
Yes.
So is there a motion to close nominations for position of Vice President of the Bayonne Board of Ed?
I'll motion to close.
And a second?
I'll second.
So I have a motion and a second to close nominations for position of Vice President. Trustee Alonso.
Yes.
Trustee Casillas.
No.
Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
No.
Trustee Velado.
No.
Trustee Willbeck.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes.
There's a motion to elect Dennis Willbeck for the position of Vice President of the Bayonne Board of Education. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
So there's a motion and a second to elect Dennis Willbeck for Vice President of the Bayonne Board of Ed. Trustee Alonso.
Aye.
Trustee Casillas.
No.
Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
No.
Trustee Velado.
No.
Trustee Willbeck.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes.
Congratulations, Mr. Willbeck. Shift one more time, Dennis, you're gonna come down and everybody shift over. Mr. Vice President, would you like to say a word or two before I start?
Ladies and gentlemen, this is my third year, going into my fourth year as the trustee and also Vice President of the Bayonne Board of Education. It's both an honor and a thrill. Uh, I can't tell you how exciting it can be and as a representative of the families of the City of Bayonne, I can promise you, we will do our best to help each and every one of you to achieve the best educational opportunities, whether they be artistic, athletic, or academic. We're gonna do the best we can to help each and every family within the City of Bayonne. That's a promise, thank you.
Okay, so following along on our agenda, we're gonna move with our consent agenda, which are resolutions A1 through A10. They are on our bulletin board. If anyone has not had a chance to see them. So is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'll motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
So I have a motion by trustee Cruden and a second by trustee Finnerty to accept the consent agenda. On that move and second, trustee Alonso.
Aye.
Trustee Casillas.
Aye.
Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Velado.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Vice President Willbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes.
Up next is our non-consent agenda items, starting with fee one. Whereas the Board of Education of the City of Bayonne, Hudson County, New Jersey is required to have an annual financial audit pursuant to NJSA 18A 23 and it will require the assistance of a certified public accountant firm to accomplish this audit. Therefore, I re-resolve that Hulip and Morrison PA Certified Public Accountant, Registered School Accountant of New Jersey is hereby contracted to make and complete an annual audit and single audit of the school district's account and financial transactions, including the cafeteria account and all public school accounts, as well as assistance with the DRT RS and the ASSA reporting review for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018 and ending June 30, 2019 in accordance and compliance with the provisions and requirements of Section NJSA 18A 23, inclusive of the revised statutes completion thereof for the sum of $59,000. Be it further resolved that the Assistant Superintendent for Business and the Business School Administrator is authorized to request that the above-named firm, on a consultant basis, abide additional professional services as needed. Uh, do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Motion by trustee Alonso and a second.
I'll second.
Second by President Broderick. On motion and second on B1, trustee Alonso. Trustee Casillas.
Yes.
Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Velado.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Uh, Vice President Willbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes.
B2, uh, I believe, yes. Mr. Solari, still here?
He left.
He left, he had a question on B2. Okay, resolution B2. Whereas NJSA 18A 40-1 requires that a chief medical inspector and medical inspector shall be employed by the Board of Education and further requires that they shall be appointed for a fixed term, which term cannot be longer than the term of the Board. Therefore, be it resolved that the below-named doctors are hereby appointed to the position and salaries indicated after their respective names for a fixed term running from January 3, 2019 through January 6, 2020, unless otherwise indicated. Dr. John DeZucis, Chief Medical Inspector, annual salary $50,648. Dr. Vincent J. Sarafino, Medical Inspector, $39,654. They're all subject to Board discretion. Be it further resolved that the above-named Chief Medical Inspector and Medical Inspector report to the Superintendent of Schools for assignment. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
And a second?
I'll second.
So I have a motion by trustee Alonso, a second by President Broderick. Uh, trustee Alonso.
Yes.
Trustee Casillas.
Yes.
Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Velado.
Yes.
Trustee Willbeck.
Yes.
I'm sorry, uh, am I out of order? Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Vice President Willbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes.
Excuse me. B3, whereas the Board of Education of the City of Bayonne, Hudson County, New Jersey deems it necessary to renew the services of Dr. Barry E. Davis Optometrist for comprehensive eye exams for students in the kindergarten, second, fourth, sixth, eighth, and tenth grades. Therefore, be it resolved that this Board of Education renew the contract with Dr. Barry E. Davis, 548 Broadway, at a cost of $3.50 per student for a fixed term from January 3, 2019 through January 6, 2020. Be it further resolved that the Assistant Superintendent for Business, School Business Administrator execute the contract in the name and on behalf of this Board and Board Counsel approve same as true form. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
And a second?
I'll second.
So I have a motion by trustee Alonso and a second by trustee Broderick. On that motion and second, trustee Alonso.
Yes.
Trustee Casillas.
Yes.
Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Velado.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Vice President Willbeck.
Yes.
And President Broderick.
Yes.
B4, these all basically read the same, I'll cut to the chase. Be it resolved that this Board of Education approves the continuation of the present contract for the year January 3, 2019, to and including June 30, 2019. Architectural services for upgrade of district facilities, DMR architects. Do I have a motion?
I move.
Second?
I second.
So I have a motion and a second. On that motion and second, trustee Alonso.
Aye.
Trustee Casillas.
Yes.
Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Velado.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Vice President Willbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes.
Next up is engineering services, Neglia Engineering, from January 3, 2019, to and including June 30, 2019. Do I have a motion?
I move.
Second?
I'll second.
So on that motion and second, trustee Alonso.
Aye.
Trustee Casillas.
Yes.
Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Velado.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Vice President Willbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes.
B6, be it resolved that this Board of Education hereby approves the continuation of present contracts for the year January 3, 2019, to and including January 6, 2020. It's for legal services, special, Approuzy McDermott, Maestro, and Murphy PC. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
So on that motion and second, trustee Alonso.
Aye.
Trustee Casillas.
Yes.
Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Velado.
No.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Vice President Willbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes.
B7 has to do with, be it resolved this Board of Education hereby approves the continuation of the present contract for the year January 3, 2019, to and including January 6, 2020. Legal services, General Chason, Lamparello, Malin, and Capuzzo. Motion?
I'll move.
And a second?
I'll second.
On that motion and second, trustee Alonso.
Aye.
Trustee Casillas.
Yes.
Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Velado.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Vice President Willbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes.
B8, be it resolved this Board of Education hereby approves the continuation of the present contract for the year January 3, 2019, to and including June 30, 2019. Health insurance brokerage services, Fairview Insurance. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
And a second?
I'll second.
On that motion and second, trustee Alonso.
Aye.
Trustee Casillas.
Yes.
Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Velado.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Vice President Willbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes.
And, uh, my final resolution, be it resolved that this Board of Education hereby approves the continuation of the present contracts for the year January 3, 2019, to and including June 30, 2019. Property and casualty workman's compensation insurance brokerage services and its Fairview Insurance. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
And a second?
I'll second.